This is the.
I'll take my ski shoes today. That didn't work.
That's all.
I'm going to see you. It's that it's that hot tub you. Probably be doing this. Definitely fun today.
With everything that I said at the take on and even very.
Yeah, you do a lot too. So good work. That that's a part of basically, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
I I just sort of put them up. You tuned up two pair and so that pair I've skied over about ten times and last time I was skiing, you know, they're just they're they're skiing fine, they went running very well, so. But I got that other pair. They're not quite as much, but I've only seen like three runs on himself. And I'm not sure how much I'm going to ski before the season anyway. That easy budget for you. So you have a have a hand.
Keep me in the running batteries for. Keep me in the running batteries for. Get a little more volume on there. Make it count.
Well, that's it. That's all I got for you.
Let's see who we have. We have Max, we have Dana, we have Tracy and Shannon, and then here we have Christian, Tim and I. Okay. Everybody's ready to go? We will get started. It is six oh two and I call the city council meeting of March twenty first, I'm sorry, of April fourth, twenty twenty three. Go on. Roll call, please.
Here.
Councilmember Kill. Councilmember Lenoir.
Here.
Councilmember Grant. Councilmember for Genzi.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Here.
Mayor Lovey.
Here. Okay, great. Thank you very much. This time I would ask if there are any changes you want to make to the agenda?
Uh, yes, we do have one addition. Uh, councilmember Laritzen wanted there to be a discussion regarding the Lura budget. And I think that can we can do what we need to do by putting it into the discussion area. We don't have to put it into action items. So if we could add that. I had requested we just add that. Probably as seven D. So bump the city administrative report down one.
Any other changes to the agenda? Both that I would hesitate, but please.
Almost in for the agenda.
For just a second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any of it, uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. At this time, we have housekeeping matters. Anything anybody would like to bring up before we really get started?
I do have one housekeeping matter.
Yes, please.
Just wanted to let you know that um, our city attorney, Chris John McCormick, is out this evening. And so we have Carmen Jackson Brown from the same law firm here to invite us. I believe you all have met her previously, but she is appearing urgently.
How are you doing? Good evening.
Okay.
I do have one additional housekeeping item, um, not an agenda change, but item eight A on your action items. Was previously noticed for a public hearing. Um, for the record, a public hearing is not required for that item by your code chapter five point four eight. Um, so there will not be a public testimony or a public hearing for item eight A. Otherwise, it's good to see you all again. I've seen some of you in a different capacity.
Thank you, Carmen. Uh, Max.
Thank you, mayor. Hey, I I just wanted to have this opportunity uh, to just bring up. I I I know that the city council. And the planning commission has been really discussing. With uh, about the the cap when it comes to short term rentals. And I just wanna um. For the record, say that. And I'd like folks to try this out before we have the next conversation about the short term rental conversation. Is we are wasting, in my opinion. A lot of time talking about changing the number from one seventy one to one fifty. That is about a twelve point four percent change. And we have something that works. And we are wasting more breath. On on that type of change, that incremental small change. Uh, which, like I said, works when we have so much other work, in my opinion, that we can focus our efforts on. I would ask you as city council members. To think about if we had time to advance the mission. What you would like to see to advance the mission in our city? And what that means. We have advanced our mission when it comes to short term rentals in a cap. I want to ask you, can we do something about parking? Can we do something about our sidewalks? Can we do something about? Our housing and affordable housing? And I'm not talking about short term rentals. Okay, I'm talking about meaningful change in other areas. And so please, before our next meeting, when we talk about this, I'd like everyone to consider. Putting this idea to bed unless somebody comes up with meaningful change when it comes to. Changing the cap for what's which is a small incremental percentage change that, by the way, provides us funding. For housing and housing initiatives. Um, we don't have enough. Places for people to stay. We don't have enough hotels and we have a significant nexus. Between the need for short term rentals and our. Economy here in this in this community. And until we see massive changes with hotels and the likes, I'm not saying to change it up. I'm not changing the change it down. I just say. I do not want to waste any more breath. As a council. On this situation anymore. That's just my personal opinion. And thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Max. Anybody else have any housekeeping matters they'd like to discuss? I was gonna mention real quick, uh, the ski Cooper has brought brought back the Easter egg hut. I know that's a minor deal, but uh, for anybody who has kids or grandkids, it's a. It's a lot of fun. It'll be uh, this Saturday at nine o'clock. Um, also, uh, for those who were able to attend, the state of the community this last week was a tremendous event. And uh, it's about our sixth annual. They've all been good. This one may have been among the best that we've ever had. And it was really, really, uh, really nice way. We had about a hundred and fifty people there. Nice turnout, nice way to communicate with the public. On what's going on uh, in our institutions. Uh, that's it for me. Last call for housekeeping measures? Okay, uh, thank you. At this time, we would like to hear from our public. Anybody in the public would like to speak? Uh, please introduce yourself, give us your address. You have three minutes.
My name is Steve Crest. I live at one thirty one East Third Street. And I've been living in Leadville since nineteen eighty. Well, you know, I guess it's. I would, you know, I'm getting a feeling today and uh. I was thinking about what I would be saying here, um, as well as at five o'clock this morning, I was thinking about what I'd be saying here. Um, the minutes of the last week. State does not feel that city Steve Prestash did not feel that city council wants to hear from the public and is minimizing city participation. Um, I have privilege, great privilege of being a standardized patient for the University of Colorado for. Uh, period about twelve years. And uh. We would uh. We were there to help enhance and evaluate communication skills of. Uh, med students and other students. And when it says it does not feel at city council, the C prestash does not feel the city council, this is untrue. This isn't a feeling, Bonnie. These facts speak for themselves. Uh. The uh, three minutes that you could speak at the end of the the meeting taken away. The input that you could have. During a discussion of agenda item taken away. Uh. The uh, non recording of uh. Input such as the previous meeting I spoke against the uh, um. A law on two thirty thousand dollars to St. George's. That wasn't in the minutes at all. So that's inputs taken away. Um, and that was a minimization of of what was was said. So. Um. This does resemble more of an autocracy. Instead of a democratic government. And it's uh, what they call charisma based. And that's always been very dangerous in history. So. I don't know how we're gonna get back on track here to where we value citizen input, but it's not my feeling. It's we don't want it. We don't allow it at the end of the meeting. We don't allow it during discussion of. Agenda items. Other than things you're gonna. Thank you, timing.
Thank you, Mr. Prestash. Anybody else in chambers who would like to speak to city council? Okay, anybody on Zoom who would like to speak to city council, if you would, please raise your hand or just unmute and introduce yourself. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, we have the consent agenda. Uh, agenda, these are the approvals of March twenty first uh, minutes. Anybody have anything in these minutes that they would like to? Change. Yes, Tracy, go ahead.
Um, in the minute, it references Maida Silver. It's a deputy city clerk. I don't believe she's been a clerk for about six months.
Where did you see that?
Staff members present.
Okay. Yep, there it is.
Then they'll move to remove the agenda from the consented. From the consent agreement.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Um, at this time, we have that one change. I have one on the. Oh, sorry, it's the last page. It says Lake County Off Highway Divorce Ordinance has second reading on April fourth. It's the first reading. Not the second reading.
No, it was the second reading. Today was the second reading.
Really?
Yeah.
I I even talking to, sorry, but you know, and I, you know, you're, I'm sure you're right, but when I, when we were, we were talking about it. I got the impression there's another reading and they were gonna make the changes that were talked about at the next reading.
No, she made the changes um, for today's reading. That was approved and it'll go into effect in. Two weeks, I believe. I think I don't have my notes in front of me.
Okay, I'll 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 check with uh, with Commissioner Mudd because I got the definite impression that the the change that I had suggested. Was one they planned to make a a change uh, to that. And if so, we would have had to make it on second reading. Anyway, uh, thank you for the correction. Second reading you is. Ted, yes, please.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I was just gonna clarify. Tracy. Is correct. Today was the second reading for the O H V ordinance. Um, the recommendation. You made you made at the meeting today would be part of uh, for another uh, ordinance at some point in the future before the O H V moratorium expires.
I see. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have one change, in which case I would entertain a motion. Uh. With that change.
Almost approved in minutes of the March twenty first, twenty twenty three. For the city council meeting, with the one change. Two and a half seconds.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All in favor. At this time, oh, April. Has been for many, many years declared by the state legislature as uh, as uh, Leadville History Month. And each year we do a proclamation in the first meeting in April, and I will read that proclamation now. Whereas the city of Leadville trainers are history, are historical assets, as well as our people and the legends and stories we hear and read about. And whereas from Joseph P. Riggs to Henry Smith, from Abe Lee to Texas Jack. From Horace Tabor and Father Dyer to Oscar Wilde and Evelyn Furman. From Billy Irwin and the Leadville Blues to Bud Ryan. From George Zeitz to the Delaware Block and the Tabor Opera House. From Doc Holliday to Marshall Dugan. From Jesse McDonald to Carl Miller, from California Gulf to the Black Cloud and Climax Mines. From Carl and Donna Schaefer and the Old Church. From Ski Joy and Boom Days. From the Herald Democrat. From Ken Clover and Mary Lee Moffin and the Leadville Trail one hundred. From Kathleen Fitzsimmons and Bill Harrington and the Irish and the Irish descendants of Leadville's mining glory days. And from Neil Reynolds and the House with the Eye, Leadville has produced legends, stories and buildings that remain compelling today. And whereas we have preserved historic structures and we have lost them. And whereas our structures, our stories and legends must be preserved in order to have the future as bright as our past. Whereas the city of Leadville wishes to honor our past. Now therefore, I, Greg Lobby, mayor of Leadville, do hereby proclaim that April twenty twenty three shall be celebrated as Leadville History Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation uh, by Nathan with Excel Energy. Uh, Nathan, you're up.
How are y'all doing?
Fine.
Good to see you again. Thank you, mayor. Thank you all for having me on this uh, historic day. So. As you all uh, know, we have the twenty twenty three construction season coming up. Um, I'm Nathan Steele. By the way, I think I've met most of you before. Uh, worked for Excel Energy on the area manager. So we've got uh, the twenty twenty three plan, just kind of letting you guys know. Broadly what we're gonna do. Um, and we'll, we'll get into it here. So whoever's got the PowerPoint, if you can move to the next slide for me, please.
Okay, get it. Can you not see that? Okay, let's keep it moving.
No, yeah, is this on the next slide? Sorry, my free must be frozen here.
Yeah, we should go back. So Nathan, we're on this uh, one that says Leadville meeting agenda.
Okay, all right, I'm just gonna read it from my end and hope you guys are following along, so.
Excuse me, I would say online, all we can see is the first page. We we don't see the advance to the second page.
Full screen, but you're not sharing the full screen version. You're just sharing the original. You want it on full screen? If you click on it, yeah. And uh. Again, if you. Yeah, maximize and just present as it is.
This is perfect. Thank you. So um. I think everybody's well aware, we're completing uh. Natural gas project. It's been going on a few years. I would hope uh, everybody agrees with Lori Ty that. This is one of the best years we've ever had in this partnership. And hope to continue building on that this year in twenty twenty three. So relocating meters, replacing relocating, installing distribution lines. And then making sure everybody's got connections and replacing uh, lines that go directly to customers, so. Uh, continuing our track record of safe, reliable service and ensuring resiliency against extreme weather. So far, we've done thirteen and a half miles of Maine and completed um, more than eleven hundred service renewals. Uh, if you go to the next slide here, we can look at the map, which is, I know what everybody cares about. At the end of the day, you can see there what we've already completed in yellow. Um, what we're gonna do in twenty twenty three. And then. Obviously, what we're gonna finish in twenty four and twenty five. Uh, and we are gonna continue rolling with seven crews. As per uh, the city's request. Um, and continue everything we've been doing with mailers going out to residents, websites, newsletters. All those things uh, that you've come to expect will continue. And then on the next slide, we've got an open house coming up. Weren't able to secure a venue. Um. Just yet, we're looking at three different places. We're hoping the Delaware Hotel will let us do it there. Uh, refreshments will be provided. And uh, we're looking at two weeks from now, starting at three thirty, going to five thirty. So if you have more extended questions, we'll be going into more details about where we're gonna be. Over the course of the summer and fall. Um, and. The plan at large over the next couple of years. Obviously, contact line. Email, website, all the same as it was last year. If anybody does have any questions, I'll do my best. Not promising anything, but I will get back to you with an answer.
The next uh, um. This next year, the areas that you've shown up there, do you hope to complete those in twenty twenty three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, pretty ambitious, but I hope you're right. And then that would just leave you with the green area for twenty twenty four?
That'd be twenty four and twenty five.
Okay.
Yeah, if you go back to the batteries. That's, yeah, Nathan, will you just highlight for us which colors are again which years? So yellow is completed, right?
Yep. Twenty twenty three is this year in the green. And then the orange is what we hope to get done. Uh, twenty four, twenty five. There's a lot more issues uh in the orange areas. Um, just older infrastructure and things of that nature that make it more difficult. In the historic district areas that we haven't completed yet. Um. But we are pretty confident we'll be able to get the green. Area done this year with seven crews.
Okay, great. Any questions from City Council? Any questions for Nathan from the public?
I would just say to Excel, thank you so much for, I think. You know, working with us and especially Lori Ty to balance the number of crews, so it doesn't feel like our entire city is coming up well. Trying to make this uh moving as quickly as possible, but sort of the, the balance. And I think last year that went uh very well. We weren't overwhelmed, but then again, the progress is being made, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Nathan, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you, guys.
Next up, we have the Tabor Opera House. This day.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, uh, city staff. Sarah Day, your Tabor Opera House Executive Director. I'm just gonna run through a couple of key highlights that are happening for the first quarter of twenty twenty three, and then later there's a separate uh business agenda item that I need to report today. Um, so we have not been slow during winter season. Much activity has been happening. I am. Proud to say that we've seated our full board. We're up to eleven members, which was always the goal back in twenty seventeen when we uh restarted the nonprofit foundation. We have three board members. Nan Anderson is on our board. Many of you know her, a local business owner and uh a historic architect. We have Celesta Cairns, also a Leadville local, uh plugged in at the high school and a fabulous connector to the youth. We also have Veronica Marina. She is our first board uh member that is out of state. She's from Texas. Uh, which her background is in development and fundraising and big dollars, which is what we really need as we start to look into the interior rehab of the building. And then we also have Violet Phil, who's joined us as our new Tabor Youth Liaison. Very exciting. Uh, we are in a very fundamental planning year this year. We have just come through a business planning session. We're thinking bits of that strategy and kind of chugging it down into what we can do now and in the next five years. While simultaneously, we are uh going through a strategic plan refresh for the board. That will also uh all feed into a hopefully feasibility capital campaign study. We continue with here, you know, with the costs of everything increasing that uh we are looking at a twenty five million dollar interior rehab, just the way that can start and continues to uh change. So we're really gonna strategize on if we need to do it all at once, or if we can strategize key pieces, and that's a lot of the work that I'm helping to facilitate right now. Uh, one exciting thing that I think we should like keep our eye on the prize on is it would be very exciting that November twentieth uh twenty twenty nine would be our hundred and fiftieth anniversary. To the day of opening, and if we had a big grand opening of some level, it would be such a great, exciting uh opportunity for us. So that's something that I'm keying into and really kind of pushing the board to figure out what that may look like. Maybe it will be the full renovation and interior rehab, but maybe there will be something else that we can do. Uh, also just kind of wanna give you a couple of updates of some great opportunities coming up. We have been. Reached out with uh Brockmont P B S for the Colorado Experience. They are pre-screening their upcoming series of um The Lost Irish of Leadville Miners. I have some flyers that I would love to leave here and have you all. Circulate. That's gonna be at the Old Church on April twenty sixth. It is a free event. You do need to register in advance. I'll send them down this way, Tim. Uh, and it's gonna be a great evening. We'll have a panelist discussion. I believe the mayor is swinging as part of that panel. And some other locals and those outside of the Irish network that have really worked uh really hard on the Irish memorial. We also will be looking with them for a community event uh later this year in September for the local Irish. Uh, celebration in September. We also have the Savior the Tabor coming back. We had that pre-COVID times. That's a six-course meal that is paired with wine and spirits. It will be um a wonderful fundraiser at the Silver Dollar Saloon. Eric Johns and Eric Willford of Sea Life Kitchen are curating a fabulous menu. It will be limited seats. Uh, those will be going on sale here uh later April, a hundred and twenty dollars, but it is a six-course meal and the wine and spirits appearing. Uh, seventy-two tickets are available, and that's a full fundraiser to the Tabor, which is extremely exciting, and I'm so grateful for such wonderful business owners. That continue to help us get awareness and have a fun evening of celebration. And then, of course, we really are kicking off this year with our Tabor Youth Collective. We're bringing back a workshop series for our youth. Grade seventh and twelfth grade. That'll be a two-week workshop in June, just after uh the students get out of school for the year. Uh, we've got lots of momentum happening and a fabulous grant. We were awarded a Red Line uh Arts and Society Grant. We were a prestigious award recipient out of thirty, thirty-five people were awarded, and there was well over a hundred applications submitted, so that's super exciting. And they will be actually performing on the Tabor stage at the end of their workshop uh for the youth. So it's a great opportunity for them to create uh their voice. It's called Untethered Voices, and they will be looking at social justice issues that are important to them and relevant to Leadville and Lake County. Very excited about that. And then, of course, our summer season, which I'm really excited about. It feels like I've been working uh months and months for this announcement. We had a couple of things that we are excited about that maybe we'll still be excited. Later this season, I'm gonna pass these around to him. Uh, but we have partnered with Lyric Theater of Leadville. That is Scott Carroll, your artistic director of the Lakeview High School. We have a robust season lined up for you for this summer. All of the tickets are currently online and you can purchase them. We have the summer season subscription, which gets you into all of the events. It gets you access to the VIP lounge in the Jolly Quirks with a free dream ticket. It gets you early access seating into the theater. I'm already gonna have a really good time. Couple of highlights. Lila Miller's coming back to, for us just before she gets inducted into Colorado Music Hall of Fame at Red Rocks. Really exciting. Uh, we are bringing back production with uh local performers with Scott Carroll and Eric Theater. Uh, they are doing the twenty fifth annual Putnam County Spelling Day. It's really tiki and fun. We've got Broadway music and stars coming to the Tabor stage. Really fun. We have a comedian, Vinnie Montez. He's a Colorado native. He's a Latinx man who's also a twenty-year veteran in law enforcement. He's hilarious, and he will be have a opener as well. That's August twenty-sixth. Uh, we know people really enjoy comedian uh Josh Blue when he came several years ago. Uh, then after the summer season, we really will be looking more to those community events, partnering with Main Street. Over there, annual auction, the Irish or Colorado, all evening and storytelling. We'll have the stories worth telling, Film Festival coming back. And really, we just are looking forward to such a robust season. It's hard to squeeze in all those dates, but hopefully you all can look at them and come out for a show. And encourage others in Leadville and beyond to celebrate with us. And as always, I just wanna offer my door and uh saying, reach out to me if you have opportunities for maybe an event space or hosting a meeting space and looking for somewhere else to be. And I know we've been helping the city a couple of times with some of that this past year. We look forward to continuing uh that growth. And I am just incredibly thankful to the city staff and the mayor for continuing to get us letters of support when we submit our uh new grant rounds. We just submitted our next State Historic Fund grant on yesterday uh to continue to do the wood print detailed work and balcony on the exterior of the building. But you know, this year, we'll wrap up the four-year masonry and window construction, and as I say, we'll be really working towards figuring out what's next on the interior. And we have some exciting meetings planned as we're already churning those wheels to figure out what to do next, so. Uh, as always, happy to answer any questions that come up, and we are here for you. We wanna continue to grow the space to be a community asset for Leadville.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, anybody have any questions for this day? I, I just wanna say, the city uh hosted it four events last year, and the Tabor Opera House was so gracious uh and so helpful, helping us put those on. And we really did appreciate it, and so uh the partnership is, is alive and well.
It sure is. We love it too. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We'll talk to you in a little while.
Yeah.
All right, next up, we have a discussion about the Lura budget. Um. Uh, Tracy, you had asked uh for us to put this on the agenda. What do you have?
Oh, I did, sorry. Um. So. It, it came to my attention this week that there's an issue again with um paying our consultant through Lura. And um. Naively, I guess I thought that the money that we appropriated last year would roll over because we appropriated. Twenty-four thousand for uh administrative staff member and sixty thousand for a consultant. And apparently, that does a rollover. So once again. We can't afford to pay our consultant, and we don't have a staff person. So I guess I'm just wondering what happened there.
Okay, um, we certainly, we can give you an update. Uh, Ms. Simonson and I have discussed this. Ms. Simonson, go ahead.
Sure, right, so uh with all of, and, and actually, uh, our finance director, Donna Schneider, can you jump in if I'm saying anything about our budget process that is incorrect? But uh, no, our budget numbers don't roll over, and so what we had was, and you all approved, the city council. What you approved for twenty twenty-three uh was not what happened in twenty twenty-two. It is a thirty thousand dollar placeholder. And with the idea that the Laura is eventually supposed to become financially self-didacting. That through the, the tax increment, it provides money for itself and would not need to be propped up by the city. So the city has been giving the Laura money to exist since it started, and the idea is that eventually it, you know, flies from the nest and supports itself. Um, what I'll tell you is that we have an invoice from the current consultants. Um, that is about eleven thousand dollars, and uh the mayor received some information. Through the Laura Council, I guess, provided by consultants that basically says, yes, while Laura is receiving tax increment money. Um, once the disbursements are made to the various entities that it's obligated to pay, um, there's no money left. And so that's where the Laura is, is that Laura has some tax increment money coming in, but it's not enough to pay its bills. Because what I would say is, um, you know, I expressed this concern when the Laura entered into a consulting agreement, but it probably needed to ensure that it had money sufficient to pay its consultant. Um, but I think that we all know what the Laura to fail. And so in discussion with the mayor, I, you could certainly use that money that has been put aside as a placeholder for the Laura. The idea of that thirty thousand dollars in the city budget was, should the Laura not have money to pay an obligation, you could use that money. So Laura has thirty thousand dollars for the entire year. The request is to pay the consultants their eleven thousand dollar bill, which is, is fine. It covers. Pretty much their work today. It's not just one month. Um, but I guess I would say that, that that's a third of the Laura budget for the year. And uh, you know, just encourage Laura to think about, you know, how it's, how its money is coming in and going out. Uh, the, the last point on that is. What I would like to do, and this is what I said before, when the Laura presents a bill to us that it is financially obligated to pay. Because the city's not financially obligated to pay it, that I just requested the Laura Board approve that invoice before we pay it. Um, so Linda Michal, the attorney for Laura, says there's a, a board meeting coming up. And this Thursday, they can approve the bill at that point. I do not feel comfortable with city paying an invoice that the board, that its board hasn't authorized. So I think that's where we are in the, in the. Like sorting through everything. Uh, I appreciate Kayla Marcela, Commissioner Kayla Marcela. Helped kind of sort through all this information as well, but that's pretty much where we, we ended up.
Any comments, questions?
Yeah, um, so last year's appropriation, did we spend any of that money? And it's still at city willing at this point to once again appropriate some funds to keep Laura flowed for the rest of the year.
Well, we, we did, and, and I think, I think all of it might have been spent. We could double check.
I don't think we spent any of it.
We spent three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars here today, so yeah.
I'm talking about the money we appropriated, the eighty-four thousand last fall. To help Laura pay her, their consultant and a staff member.
We never appropriated that, so just to be clear, that's not correct. What we put in the budget was a thirty thousand dollar placeholder. Each year for Laura, for the last five years, we put what we referred to as a placeholder in place. We knew every year that twenty-five thousand dollars wasn't gonna cut it. I mean, I mean, the expenses for Laura had been way, way beyond that. But we did the same thing every year because we had no way of projecting what Laura would need. This year, we projected a budget for Laura, which is what you have is a Laura budget. But that projection is not in the city budget. The city budget has a thirty thousand dollar placeholder. That's it. So just to be clear. Uh, now, here's the good news. There's good news here, and that is, according to the numbers I got from Linda Michal, which Carrie put together. We have received in twenty twenty-two uh fifty-nine thousand dollars into the Laura bank account. That was fourteen thousand dollars. That we had for the year before, frankly, so I'm not really sure. Where the balance of those funds are, and then on March seventh, we received another thirty thousand dollars. So we're up to eighty-nine thousand dollars. Now, the, the good news is, you know, that is, is in terms of projections. We're supposed to receive, I believe it's a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. That's what's been projected by the assessor's office, and that's what uh Kayla Marcela has. So we're gonna be in good shape as the year goes on. That's, that's what it looks like to me. Um, and in twenty twenty-four, I think that uh when they, in, in, in uh, in urban new authorities, they have to reassess every year, not every two years. According to state law, so um, it looks good. The future looks, looks good right now. Uh, if the Laura Board approves this uh, this bill uh from C L A on Thursday, then uh the city will pay it.
Okay, I guess you will find out on Thursday.
Seems pretty straightforward to me. Anybody else have any questions? And it's also something we can discuss on Thursday at the, at the E L U R I meeting. Okay, thank you very much.
I would just like to note that I will be unable to attend that meeting.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for all this note. Okay, at this time, we have the city administrators' report.
Uh, great, so I asked our deputy city clerk to add. My report to every council meeting going forward, because there's always a lot going on. And it's easier to do it in shorter reports rather than one long one every month, so. Uh, and I also wanted to introduce uh someone who has joined the city. I wanted to introduce Michelle Maroney. She is our new administrative assistant, supporting me and our finance director. We're really excited to have her join the team. Um, I think, you know, things are meant to be for a reason. I think the hospital's loss is, is, is our gain in this case, and Michelle has been with us for. A whole week now, and um it's, jumping in right away, and I just have to say it's, it's fantastic. Um, you know, between her and our human resources director and Lucian, I. I, I, you know, maybe it's too good to be true. I feel like there's a little bit of the pressure, uh, the pressure valve is, is releasing a little bit. So I wanted to introduce you to Michelle and not to put Michelle on the spot, but if you just wanted to say anything, uh, share anything with the council, let them know about yourself.
Michelle, come up, come up here, so the city council could hear you.
Uh, thanks, Lori. I'm really excited to be here. Um, like Lori said, I came from the hospital. And it's been such a relief for me to be in a situation where it's a joy to come to work again. We'd be really glad to be here. Um, my husband and our two dogs.
My husband and our two dogs and I moved up to Leadville in twenty eighteen. We lived in our thirty-two foot trailer with our two giant dogs for two years while our house was being built. And we moved into our house a couple of years ago, and we love it. And we're not going anywhere. They're going to have to carry me out of box. So I'm really glad to be here. I think that the team upstairs and and the mayor is just great so far.
And also, Michelle has previous municipal government experience.
Yeah, I was in the city just about for eight years back in the late eighties and nineties. I worked in the finance department, collecting sales tax and collecting utility bills. So this item, but it was very enjoyable. I liked being in the community involved in it. So I don't live in the city, unfortunately, but I'm really, I'm looking forward to being involved with the city activities. So thank you.
Good. Thanks, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle? All right. Thank you, Michelle. We'll watch out there.
I wonder if she can be on the hook. So I gotta remember that that I do that sort of along those lines, you know, we we've been making a lot of progress in the city. And I think Max, I'm kind of Councilor Frigenti, I'm kind of bummed that you're not here. But what we have done is we have updated the city's organization charts. So I'm going to hand this out because we have printed copies. But we, you know, we wanted to, yes, after days, we wanted to include some of the newer positions. And also, we will be posting that on the website. Does the council want me to send out a copy to you or is it posting on the website sufficient? And Councilor Frigenti, I'm kind of looking at you.
I would like to have a copy.
Councilor Grant wants a copy. Councilor Frigenti, okay, that's I I don't have a problem just sending a copy up, but it's nice to have that done. This is what getting additional staff on hand helps us. And thank you to the mayor for navigating all the programs to get that updated. Couple other things I wanted to talk about. We.
Do we have a hand raise? Oh, Max, did you have a comment? Yes, please.
I just have a question is that when we made that organization chart, who approved the org chart?
Our city administrator approved it.
Okay. I was just wondering, is it if there was any chance for us to read? I mean, it's great. I'm certain it is, Ms. Simonson.
However. Max, it's an evergreen document, not a problem. If you have input on it, you'd like to see changed. If Lori approves, then we can change it in a heartbeat.
Is there is there? I mean, I would just like to make sure that it has a date assigned to it at least so we know what day that 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 is, that org chart is.
I can put that on the the data. The data is on the file itself. I can always put that on the file, but I'll put it on the org chart as well. That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yep. And I guess the question, sorry to interrupt Ms. Simonson, your 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 administrative report. But another piece is is that if we wanted to change the organization chart in the future, which also has ramifications for funding, right? Because if we add a position, for example, that comes with the need for for funding. How does that move forward where we we add positions to the organization or remove positions from the organization chart?
Right. It it's not adding or removing from the chart. You you know, any position that is created by our code has to be approved by the city council. So that's why the additional positions I brought to you all by resolution to have approved. And I knew approve them to be funded in the budget. So that's how they get approved. And then really, I mean, the 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 organization chart is generally set by code. So if you'll see, you know, I report to the mayor and through the city council. And then you can see there are some, there are some of the positions that are sidelined on the municipal court. Does not report to me, actually. So you'll see that the rest of the the departments, it really, it is by the by code. Who they report to. And so if there was another position created, we have to do that same process again that we've done in the past.
Good. Fantastic. That's a great step in the right direction. Thank you very much for that additional conversation.
Sure. Yeah, I feel like we're making progress in getting some of these things checked off the list. So it feels good. A couple of other updates. And we are working with county on the E nine one one board and bylaws and intergovernmental agreement. So this is commonly referred to as dispatch. I'm giving you all a heads up on this because we've had several drafts of those documents. And those documents are, you know, going through the final revisions. They've gone through some legal review. And what I'm giving you a heads up on is you will hopefully see those on the April eighteenth agenda. So the county and the city are looking to try and get those on our agenda for the eighteen to basically establish that entity. And it's been a good partnership. We had a good meeting. We had a good work session. Wow, I can't remember since like a year ago, but it was probably just the other day, but a very productive work session. And I think we're we're pretty close on that. So just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming.
A quick question, if you don't mind, the any costs associated with the E nine one one that the city share, will those be twenty twenty-four budget considerations?
Well, that's that's been an interesting. That's one of the things we went back to the drawing board on was how that each entity's cost share would be calculated. And I think what we came up with was it it would be based upon the the any calls within the city limits, and then it would be prorated. So it 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 will be a look back for the past five years as as to the number of calls that have originated within the city limits. And get looking not just the last year, but a five years so we can have an average and a better idea of what that is. And then that will come up with a number of calls within the city limits that would be used for prorated twenty twenty-three.
Oh, twenty twenty-three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And so that was one of the things we 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 talked about. I think that it's possible to gather that data and and do that. So it, everybody, all the partners are a little bit different. We talked about, you know, fire, where, you know, fire may grow up with EMS, so we don't want to double count. So there's different ways we need to kind of iron it out for the different partners. But the cities would be based upon calls within the jurisdiction. Because again, we may respond to a call that it was outside of our our jurisdiction. We may send officers, but that wouldn't be counted against us as a call within our jurisdiction that we would be paying in for it. If that makes sense.
Okay. In that work session, was there a discussion about getting dispatch out of the closet? I mean, I'm I'm really curious about that because with with the justice that are on hold, I don't know what the future holds for that.
No, that wasn't discussed.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Great. So that is something that is a couple last few things. Just reminder, Councilmember Frigenti brought up the short term rental discussion on April eleventh. That I also wanted to remind everybody we will have a work session on the ninth regarding the sandwich boards. The good news is after our last work session, we have gone, the mayor and I have gotten some information and input from some local businesses. I reached out to Elsa Farc to try and schedule a meeting to talk with some of the other businesses and get their input. So I guess what I'm going to say is the good news is we're getting some traction on this subject and hopefully some good input before your next work session. The last thing I wanted to just update you on is, per your request, I did reach out to Brent to look into getting a date for our town hall. Regarding the values and and, you know, discussion of regarding a new police chief. They want to host this for us. So I have now delegated to hopefully have Michelle work with them to get a date or to see dates that they're available. I, you know, we sort of talked about when we would do that. It 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 would be nice to have that sooner rather than later. But I guess I just wanted a little bit of guidance from the council when we're working with freight. I was assuming that we would probably want to do this during a weeknight, probably sometime after five thirty or six P M. Are those, do you think those are reasonable parameters? Or do you think we should have it on a weekend?
I think weeknight at those time periods makes sense. Though we want to do weekend or both, I think both tends to be the best outcome for anyone who may not be able to go during these days. Usually it's what works best.
Okay. And I, yeah, so I will see what what they have available. And I just said, in, you know, essentially, we would like to have this as soon as we can and let us know your available days. So I'm just asking, please keep an eye on your email because once I get some available days, I'll send them out by email to see what looks for everybody. And that's it. I would like to give an update on Parkland. As you can see, it's going along well. The sign is on, the roof is on. Their weather has been very conducive to continue to work on that. So we're excited that that is has been on track since the construction started again. And that's it.
Any question for Ms. Simonson? Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have a renewal for elevated quality wholesale cultivation license. In the past, we've treated this as a public hearing, but we've been advised by council, Carmen mentioned it, but we will not treat this as a public hearing. It is simply a renewal, and there have been no complaints or issues or public comments of any kind. So are there any questions about this from city council? Any questions or concerns? It's a pretty simple matter. If there are no objections, I would propose a motion, please.
I'm going to approve the annual renewal for twenty twenty-three for the retail cultivation license. For Josh Myers, D V A, Elevated Quality Wholesale LLC, at two ten East Tenth Street.
Luna Led seconds.
Is there any other discussion? I would say it's my impression, certainly anytime I've been by there, that I've never smelled anything coming from that building. So it feels, it seems to me they've done a good job for years now of of controlling that and and being a good neighbor. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Frigenti.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yeah.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Mayor Bobby.
Yes. Okay, next up, we have resolution number seven, series of twenty twenty-three. This is approving a temporary construction and access easement agreement with with Lifetime Fitness Real Estate Company. Miss Day, would you like to speak to us about that?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Before you is a resolution that was prepared by the city attorneys and Carmen. We were able to meet last week to finalize details. I've been working along with the contractors that were hired for this phase of the project, Andy with Ian and renovations, to negotiate for a temporary construction easement with Lifetime Fitness. This year, we'll be working on the north wall, which is the wall that upsets directly to the Lifetime Fitness building. We have to get pretty creative because we cannot put scaffolding on top of the roof. That there was a fire at some point in the Lifetime Fitness building, so it's just not comfortably found for that. So we had to pivot. Luckily, we have the contingency money in all of our grants that we've raised to do the swing arm style of scaffolding that we need to do. So it will be coming off of the roof to do that, make some rework, as well as the ghost sign neuralist. All of those individuals that will be doing the work are, you know, contracted with the Tabor Opera House through the city of Leadville as the city owner. This specifically is an easement that both the Lifetime Fitness attorneys have reviewed and given comments back. And the city attorneys to get this temporary construction easement in place for this year's season. Hopefully, this will lay the groundwork as well as we continue to do work for a perpetual easement that at some point we'll need in order to have egress outside of their building from the balcony area. But at least this is an interim step, and we worked really well in last year. And Tamara at Lifetime Fitness locally has just been fabulous to work with. So everyone's in good spirits. Happy to answer any questions that come up or come through the deputies of the attorney if there is needs.
All right. Any questions from this day? Carmen, any comments or thoughts on this?
Nope, my comments have already been incorporated in the draft. That's in front of you. So nothing else from legal. It's good to go.
I I do want to comment that Lifetime Fitness has been pretty gracious in all this. And and in fact, you'll note that they've signed this document already, awaiting the rest of the signatures. So that's a that's a step in the right direction. I I was also pleased that when they rebuilt their gap on the back of their building, they rebuilt the the fire escape stairs on the side of the Tabor Opera House, which actually surprised me a little bit, but they did.
They did. They did a lot of work the year before last. And so we want to make sure to be very thoughtful and competent of protecting the work that they've done because they installed a new roofing system. And so those were some of those nitty gritty conversations, particularly initially when we were going to scaffolding directly on that. But that's now less of an issue and it's as the least of the less burden some we can possibly be for Lifetime Fitness. And that was kind of our strategy.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any any other questions for this day or for Carmen on this document? In which case I would entertain a motion, please.
Luna Land moves to adopt resolution number seven, series of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving a temporary construction and access easement agreement with L T F Real Estate Company, Inc. for the installation and construction of temporary fencing and stair tower related to face three of the Tabor Opera House rehabilitation of exterior and below project.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Frigenti.
Yes, yes.
Eric Proton Green.
Yes.
Oh, you could do better than that.
It's how she was thinking about. Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gil.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, it's pretty exciting. Several years in the making, we have resolution number eight, series of twenty twenty-three, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Leadville and Lake County concerning law enforcement mutual aid. Would you like to speak to us each about this?
Good evening, everyone. And Lori, if you want to jump in any moment, please do. Yes, here's in the making, I believe. I I know when I came into it, this was in the works. And it seems like there were some holdups when it just came to the reimbursement side of things. I think we're working through some of the the language on just how we're going to support each other in Leadville and in Lake County. We came to agrees on pretty early. So with the reimbursement side of things, we've used the rest of this year. So we just track numbers to see how we're doing ship coverage mainly. And then we'll we'll reanalyze things at that point. What I like that's in there is that has to be something that we agree on at all parties agree. So that's really not the the search here. The search here is for to to come up with some clarity in the terms and conditions of what it's like to assist each other. And it's just to clarify what that means exactly is is if an officer detail in the city limits, they're the officer in charge within the city limits. They request help from us. If we have the the skills, equipment and ability to do so, we'll do so. Because this agreement doesn't require that action. It gives us that opportunity as from the sheriff's standpoint. Uh as from the sheriff's standpoint to make that decision or not, and then also from the city standpoint, if they wanted to assist us. Outside of the city limits. Uh what this also does for me as the sheriff is it gives that clear language on what exactly we're requesting when I demonetize somebody. So a lead-up police officer is demonetized to help us in the county outside their jurisdiction. This gives that clarity on exactly what that means. Lori, would you like that?
I just wanna say that this is something that uh we've been working on with Sheriff's Department since I got here and I'm just really pleased that it's for you. It really. You know, I I just wanna say the partnership of the sheriff's office has been outstanding. Um with the Leadville Police Department, we we rely on you, you rely on us. We are a small community and what I I I agree with the sheriff, I what I like about this is. You know, when we initially sat down to think about this, we we said the the reimbursement would just potentially be. Uh a headache and in this case, we're gonna track it and see what it looks like. You know, maybe sometimes we may need more help or the sheriff's department may need more help. I think in fact, in the end, it would be. Like a wash where we're just there for each other, so.
Exactly.
Any questions for Sheriff Speckman? Off our data, yes, please.
Oh, I actually, I'm not sure if my question is really for Sheriff Speckman or if it's for Carmen. I actually have several questions. About the actual wording in the resolution or in the agreement. Is is now the appropriate time to ask?
It is.
Okay, so so my first question, just on on my reading of this, I just wanna make sure I'm reading this correctly. Cause legalese is not. One of my languages. So the in reimbursement uh for the assisting. Parties would only include. The shift hours and overtime uh covered. Based on on what's, you know, the time that they provide the service, no. Extra gasoline expenses, et cetera. Is that correct?
If that's not indicated as the reimbursement, I don't believe it's included, but I think. You have someone chiming in over there.
I can answer it. So I, Councilmember Green, I just wanna understand your question. I I just wanna make it clear right now, there's no reimbursement.
But I mean that when there is a reimbursement section where they say there they would talk about it and it goes. Sorry, let me scale down. It's under a section for reimbursement. Um and then it talks about how they'll track their respective shift coverage hours and expenses. And then discuss if they mutually agree to seek reimbursement from each other. And I just, and my question, because there's a different part of it that. Says that. Other things are not included, so that the reimbursement discussion only involves. Shift coverage hours. Including overtime.
Correct.
Okay, so then my.
Is that your?
Yes.
I'm sure, yes, okay, got it.
So then my next, my next question is under, because the the um. Party providing the assistance is still an employee of their their home base, not the requesting. Base, um so they are, the requesting base does not cover. Any workman's compensation, you know, for injuries. Sustained in the shift coverage hours. The home base of the of the assisting. Group would cover that. Um. It is, is that right?
Yes, I think that's covered in the independent contractor section where it clarifies that employees of a party shall at all times. Um remain as employees of the party, and I think that's covered in section six.
And it does workman's comp, I I'm. I know the city has a history of going through some of these and we know that, you know, after if you get a claim, then your insurance costs go up. Does workman's comp cover even if they're operating out of jurisdiction if a different group is requesting their aid? Um no, go ahead, I'm sorry. There's just a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so. Thank you. So then um. I'm, that's the, that's the extent of my legalese questions. My my just basic question is, are we planning to to um. Monitor any other stats like um. Aside from just the shift coverage hours, like are we gonna mark how many requests are made and how many requests are answered? In the affirmative versus the negative um, et cetera.
That would be dispatch would track that, right?
Right, well, yeah, those are all numbers that are fairly easy to access. And then, so although it's not addressed specifically what data points we would collect, uh we can always go back and and grab it.
That concludes all of my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else that has a good question?
Uh I have a comment. Um we go section four reimbursement, then section six, independent contractor. Is that? Is there a reason for that?
Oh, good catch. That's because we can't count in revenue rules.
Does we ensure there wasn't like a hidden section five?
Uh no, that's actually a good catch and and I caught uh one other thing the other day and. Uh Christian assured us that your resolution that you passed tonight, we can make type of corrections like this. So you can pass it and you can correct the number.
So we don't have to worry about affecting that notion?
If you would like to, you you can, but if we didn't notice it until tomorrow, we could still make that.
But what's the other?
Uh we go to section twelve miscellaneous from section seven.
Gotcha, okay. We we can make those corrections, so thank you for catching that.
All those other sections here, the secret document. Yes, data.
Sorry, I thought of another question. So in the in the now section five, independent contractor. Because of the way that it's framed, that reimbursement may be sought. Um i- you know, like if the. Responding party or the assisting party is doing work and helping out the requesting party. There and they are not, they're not. Employees of the requesting party. Because of the way that that it's structured to request reimbursement, which is more of a, at some convenient time, they'll sit down and discuss. If if it's mutually agreed that one will reimburse the other, does that? Eliminate the requirement of likes of issuing like a ten ninety nine to the assisting officers?
I would say they specify December thirty first, twenty twenty three. As a date after which they can discuss those those possible.
Um right. Right, I guess my question is, is because is. Is, for instance, if the city requests assistance from the sheriff's department. The city is not gonna have to provide ten ninety nines to the officers from the sheriff's department who respond, correct?
Max is answering, sorry. Oh, Max, you're on mute.
Yeah, this is, this is a mutual aid agreement, right? And so that's, that's ultimately, they're covering their own compensation, workman's comp. Across the board. My only quick question with. The reimbursement uh section four B two is it actually has the word will instead of may. On like the second or third. Per uh sentence down and I keep losing it as I shift from one screen to the next. But it says. The party requesting shift coverage will reimburse the assisting party for the cost of regular wages, including any overtime. Should that will in that fourth sentence or fourth line be may reimburse? Because it's a mutual aid agreement. I don't know what that means, like when it starts to become a burden to the other party. Um and. I, and I'm not, I'm with you uh council member, Mayor Proton Green, that I I'm not legalese, but like I. Uh is is there a trigger point like in in fire, in the fire service? Mutual aid is usually by like a certain shift coverage uh for twenty four or forty eight hours that that. If somebody responds to something. Right, and and an emerging incident that they'll pay, they'll 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 cover their costs for X amount of time. Without even blinking an eye. And then after that point, then they, then it triggers some sort of. Discussion on what that reimbursement cost will be. I mean, if I came to uh, you know, if if the. And I'll try to make it short, but if if the city helped the county. Uh for some event, I will say Leadville Lifetime Fitness. Trail one hundred and then we come back and say every single hour that we helped them, we're gonna bill you for it. That's not really in the in the spirit of mutual aid, so. I'm just um Miss uh uh Jackson Brown, if you can. Kind of shed light on how that works, it'd be fantastic.
Well, and you're correct. Generally, will and shall is language just directing that you're required to do something by way of the agreement. As opposed to may, which is optional. So what I would suggest, because I know this was a long negotiation period with a lot of parties that didn't include me, unfortunately. Um and we take that that request with the edits, I'm sorry?
No, actually, can I, can I clarify? Cause actually it wasn't involved in the.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna suggest we include that with the edits and then the drafters can decide whether or not it's substantive, but go ahead, I'll leave it to you.
No, it doesn't, the uh Councilor for Gentry, your point is we'll take it, but if you read the whole paragraph. It doesn't need to be changed. And the reason it doesn't needs to be changed, doesn't need to be changed is that the language above. That will is our conditions precedent, meaning the conditions before that ha- happened before the will gets triggered. So what it says is after December thirty first, twenty twenty three, if. The parties mutually agree in writing that they will seek reimbursement for each other, so that's the first condition that has to be met. Um subject to annual appropriation, that's the second condition that has to be met. There has to be money available. Then the will actually gets triggered. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Chris is, Chris has got a thumbs up and you're muted.
Yeah, I that's, I was looking for my mute button button. I I guess. I I guess I I would feel more comfortable if it said will reimburse. To the terms. Agreed to from above. I mean, I I don't know, and maybe I maybe I'm getting too far into it and I'm not a legal person and I know that you have that. Law background, but I mean, as long as it doesn't put us on. We can't just neither, it's it's in the spirit of mutual aid and I wanna make sure that. It is meant to, that there is a a a discussion of what is reasonable cost. On why we are uh requesting uh that type of renumeration from the other party if it comes to that point. And in that it's, so if 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 it's covered, I'm good with it.
Yeah, to your point, it does definitely say if the parties mutually agree and if the money's available. Then will is appropriate.
Okay.
Yes, Tracy.
Well, I'm wondering if to um Max's point, there should be. A mediation clause of some sort in here in case they don't mutually agree and aid. Mutually disagree. And who's gonna make that decision?
Carmen, is there any mediation uh in here?
Let's see.
I don't see it. Uh.
No.
The clause would say something like uh Councilmember Loretson suggested. You know. I, you know, what I've seen is if the parties can't agree, they agree to do informal resolution or reselling to any type of formal litigation, something like that.
And there is a no obligation clause in there as well. Again, I know this was heavily reviewed, but there is a no obligation clause in there. Um but um. You know, we can't put arbitration, obviously, but we could, they could add language to say, but it may be considered substantive, just so you know, and I know this was a long time. Um coming um to add something about the parties will mutually agree to, you know, to to work together reasonably. Et cetera, but again, that would probably be if there's not already a provision in there, you know, a little different than fixing a typographical or a typo. I just see a no obligation, which seems like uh I'm an out and and the paragraph we were just talking about does start with with um may. So um it seems as if there is wiggle room in there for that purpose.
Uh can you point out to us where the no obligation?
Oh, I think that was, oh, let me find. The page number, it is.
It is one of.
Page four.
Section one letter.
The provisions of this agreement is voluntary, nothing, nothing obligates or shall be construed to ob- obligate either party. Um outside of their respective jurisdictions.
Okay. Are we reasonably satisfied with that or do we feel like? Uh we need something in addition?
I think that. That sounds like it's only to provide mutual aid, but it doesn't discuss payment. I just think there should be some mediation clause in there. If if there can't be. If somebody is asking for payment and they can't come to some agreement, there needs to be a escalation clause. Through a mediation board or something.
How difficult is that to add, Carmen?
Um that's not difficult to draft. My only concern is, again, um that would probably, that would be a substantive change and not just a typographical error, so we'd have to. Revisit that, get that language in and present it again. So it's certainly doable.
Christian? She's about to say something.
Well, I I guess my uh so this. And I. I would love to not be have to bring this back again, so I guess I would just ask the other, we have our. The other parties here, we have the sheriff here, we have the county attorney here, the county manager here. Uh I guess my question is. Would you all be agreeable to that? Is that something we haven't heard from you to see if that's something you think we need?
Uh he first, then I'd like to hear from Chris.
No, I think Tracy brings up a good point that we need to address that potential situation.
Okay, Chris.
Yeah, I I would have no objection to adding a mediation provision in there.
Is that something we could do? Uh as part of a motion or do we need to bring this back in front of city council at a future date?
Um. I I can't speak that. What I would say is that if city council were to approve an amended version of this via motion tonight. Including that type of provision, I'm happy to work with Carmen to get um. That version finalized for the commissioner's approval as well.
And what would you suggest? The wording of that might be so we have some confidence in what's gonna be in it. I know, I know, it's terrible position to be in, but it doesn't have to be exact. I just wanna hear what you would put in there. As a mediation clause and it would probably be one sentence, right?
Well, yeah, my my thought would be, we'll get to that, is that. Uh if we're looking at that section four. Um reimbursement uh be two. Um you know, we could add a a three or something addressing to the extent that. The parties can agree, unless you're talking about specific, each specific request for reimbursement. Um and so I guess it's like at the end of two, it talks about the invoicing and stuff like that. Um you know. If if a party objects to the invoice or whatever, uh and here here's the thing, I I hazard to say. Put in a mediation provision about routine reimbursement requests because. We don't have a a core group of mediators in Leadville, so if we have to go into a formal mediation. Um that could, that could really bog things down, so it might be better to say. You know, they put a provision in there about disputing the bills. And that in such event. The executive members of each party being, you know, I guess the sheriff and the city administrator or police chief would be the ones. That would then meet to discuss. The disputed invoice and then in such event that no agreement can be. Can be uh made as to that disputed invoice, then. Can be, um, made as to that disputed invoice, then the parties could trigger. Mediation or something. I just, I would like to have. More of an opportunity to informally. Review and. Agree to something before we trigger formal mediation. Carmen might have other ideas, but I just know. Being up here in Leadville, we just don't have a lot of mediators that are readily available and the one, so we typically have to bring them up from other localities and. The price tag on that will likely exceed the amount disputed.
And, and, and my thought really is, as I said earlier, if we're gonna add a whole section to the agreement and we don't have it in writing at this point, it's sort of just. Um, theoretical, what we wanna see, sort of an escalation and mediation. Um, that, that's something that I think all the parties need to review and agree to. Um, let me see who, if we have everybody in the room, um, and I know this has been a long time coming, but that just sounds like. A substantive amendment that needs to be clear, uh, before you approve the agreement.
I agree.
So is that the opinion, is the opinion, I, I, there, I'm trying to figure out if there's a way you could do it tonight. Is, is if we could agree on a couple sentences tonight. Would that be something that we could, is it, it sounds like Chris is saying, you know, uh. We, you could put something in the agreement, then they can take it back to the commission. I guess the other person we haven't heard from is Tim, uh, any thoughts on, uh. From your side?
Um. No, I'm, I'm fine with what, you know, like Chris and Carmen said, it's a big. Change. I will follow Heath's lead if he thinks it's a good, um, addition, but that. Puts us back to square one or we, you know, we can, uh. Carmen and Chris can. Work on the language and we can have it on our respective eighteenth, uh, agendas.
That sounds like we should table. Well, let me, let me make sure I understand. For Chris and Carmen, both, both, uh, you know, uh, legal entities for the city and the county. What is your recommendation?
Uh, Carmen, I'll go first and just say that, that, you know, Tim, Tim is somewhat correct in that, you know, we, we can't. Make decisions. I can't make a decision that's binding on the county unilaterally. So any changes will have to go back to the commissioners. I'm happy to work with Carmen to expedite that as quick as possible because yeah, I know I've been working on this since at least twenty twenty-one. And so it's, uh, I, I agree, it's a long time in the making, but we wanna get it right and we've already identified some typos and such, so. Um, I, I agree, we could tee this up for the eighteenth and I don't know if, uh, Heath has a difference of opinion or, or. Mister Mayor, the council members, but I don't think that. Two week delay is going to be material to getting this in place, but. I know Heath is the one that's been struggling with your colleagues at the police department to get this set up, so. We could also, if, if, I mean. The commissioners can do a special meeting, so I don't know if city council has any other meetings where this could be addressed between now. And the eighteenth, if you wanna expedite it any further.
It, it's possible. Heath, give us some idea of what? The downside of putting this off for two weeks might be for you.
I think it needs to be done. So if it, if it does take two weeks, I, I prefer the accelerated plan, um, just so we can get this because it's kind of in the middle right now. You know, we have some officers that are deputized. It's just kind of a, by a verbal agreement by, at this point, so it needs done as soon as possible.
Would you, would you say you're basically working under this agreement now, but waiting for it to be ratified? Is that a fair statement?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Um, then, uh, at this time, I would entertain a motion to continue, um, this resolution.
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
Are we, do we have the special meeting date in which we will be discussing this or just assume that it's for the?
I believe we're assuming it's for the eighteen. Uh, if there's, if, if they come back to us and say. Could we, could the eleventh be a special meeting? Then we could consider that.
You already have a word session for your, uh, SDRs.
I understand.
Um. In that case, um. Doing that moves to continue the conversation of resolution number eight, series of twenty twenty-three on, uh, April eighteenth.
Green second.
I'm sorry, green seconds, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilmember for Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Green?
Yes.
Mayor Robbie?
Yes. Uh, I do wanna say thank you, everybody from the county for being here. Uh, sorry, we weren't able to put this to bed, but we're talking about one piece. That really needs clarification and we're there. And thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Uh, next up, we have the public meetings planner. Anything on here we want to? Add or? Opine on? This one.
Like I said, Parker, can you note the correction on the, um, April? Need HPC meeting to include the open house.
Yes.
I'll do that in mayor's report. Thank you. But thanks for reminding me. No, really. I meant to do it as quick after the proclamation. Thank you. Okay, nothing on the meetings planner? Next up, mayor's report. Laura just reminded me, uh, that she would like to remind us all. Uh, that we had, that the, uh, historic preservation commission. Uh, has a couple of open houses coming up. To allow the public to discuss with them. Uh, and anybody who wants to discuss, uh, some of the changes, uh, that they're, um, contemplating. In terms of code and coverage of the historic preservation commission. One will be on April the eleventh, which is next Wednesday at four o'clock. And the other will be on May ninth. Which is also, uh, is also on a Tuesday at four o'clock. Oh, five o'clock.
The meeting starts at four and open house starts at five.
Eleven to the mark five?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Um. Real quick. Uh, the, the county commissioners, uh, consider they did second reading, second reading, Kim. Of the O H V ordinance. I, I really felt like they did a good job and they're, they're really trying hard to. To take care of our community and not hurt businesses in the meantime, so. Uh, we'll see when the special use permit is worked out. What that actually means, but I, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that's gone into that O H V ordinance. Um, the type three engine arrived the other day. Oh my goodness. It's a thing of beauty. Smaller than I thought it was actually, but that's, that's a whole different subject. Um, station two, we had a really nice award ceremony last weekend at station number two. Um, I guess it was weekend before this last weekend, but, uh, you know, and really nice big turnout and station two is looking good. That you have a punch list to finalize it. Uh, I don't know exactly when that will be completed, but as soon as it is, uh, then we're gonna have, uh, ribbon cutting and open house for station two. Uh, that one's how many years in the making? Kayla, Kayla, if Kayla were here, she'd be able to tell us. Okay, any city council reports?
Uh, I have one, um. So homelessness, uh, subcommittee, um, of the housing coalition, uh. Is finalizing the report. Uh, Chris C just met with the regional housing authority, uh. To discuss some of the future, what we'll do and how we'll cooperate with them. And that should finalize the report, so I imagine that should be coming. In presentation form, uh, within the next couple of meetings that we have, uh, which is immense and that will give us a lot better of a. Idea of what we're dealing with and potential solutions to, uh, the. Needs that we're dealing with when it comes to homelessness. Um, additionally, as mentioned, we had a strategic. Planning meeting with, uh, the regional housing authority, kind of discussing what our goals are moving forward. And I figured you guys would want to, uh, know a little bit more about that. Um, we are very interested in increasing programming and not just building. In terms of, uh, homes to help solve our housing crisis. Um, and we've, uh, kind of outlined our values and other such. Important things, uh, to future goals that we might have. Uh, Tim did a great job. Um, Tim Bergman did a great job. Uh, facilitating the conversation with us and. I feel like we're set up for huge successes in the short term. We're working with the school district right now to finalize the. Uh, transfer of the land, uh, of their parcels, um. And we're working with, uh, the county to see if there's any other potential use of land, uh, that we could use for the DOLA grant. Seems like DOLA was totally okay with that, uh, with change plan, what happened with the, um. Contamination of the land that was already there. Seems like the commissioners, uh, are in talks with the, uh, EPA to kind of. Understand if there's anything that we can do to continue using the courses we've already discussed, but in the case that we can't. DOLA has expressed that it's okay if we change your own parcels a little bit. So, great news all around. Seems like we're moving forward. We have lots of interest in the board for our open seats. Uh, unfortunately, we lost Andrew Wu Honda, um, who was a member at large. Uh, but we have had multiple members of the community now apply. If you are interested in applying. Feel free to reach out to Jackie, uh, Will hand, Will hand, who will be able to direct you to our. Uh, application and anyone is more than welcome to apply to the open position. Um, as of today, I believe, um, if not yesterday, we are. Um, shaping and, and filled up our last seat. Is that right?
Yes, it may, yeah, may be recommendations.
I think we gave you jurisdiction to fully appoint to your. Uh, section, so we have all of our subcommittees, so to say, filled up. We're just looking for the last board member, um, at. At the. Of the board at large.
When will you decide on that?
Um, I don't think we have a tentative date, uh, most likely be at our next meeting, which is the nineteenth of this month.
Uh, what time?
Uh, five thirty.
No, Keith, it's five thirty. Tim, any thoughts? You're on the board.
I think Christian somewhere I can have a pretty good.
That's my housing.
It's a lot. You guys are doing a lot.
We actually do have a grievance subcommittee that needs to be built, but that's. I don't have any need for that right now.
Right.
We don't have any, um, structures to grieve about. But the planning subcommittee is. Is coming along just fine, checking in and.
Our new member Stanley.
Yes. Hmm, the new guy, Dan Fordcraft is. We don't need to face him until five a.m.
Let's call it, well. Uh, Dana, please.
Thank you. I, I would just like to consider bringing back the public commentary at the end of our meetings. I don't. Know exactly when that slipped away, but. I don't think it's a huge. Thing. It's not a huge time consuming thing, but I think it's appropriate. Because if. The public wants to comment on something that we covered in that meeting. They get to say it in that moment when it's fresh in our minds and fresh in their minds and not have to say, bring it back two weeks later at our next meeting. When. You know, all of our, our fresh discussion is, is long past. So I would just like to see that come back.
I think that's a good suggestion. Thank you. Anybody else? Any council reports? Uh, Max, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, I, so I wanna put my hand down. Uh. I just wanna, uh, say. First, the mutual aid agreement between the city and the county, uh, law enforcement departments is absolutely fantastic. It's a step in the right direction. And in that light. I, I wanna also let you know that I will not be in attendance, uh, in the, uh, April eleventh meeting when it comes to the short term rental. Uh, discussion. And. I'm saying that because yes, I have to go and be part of my critical incident management team and there are annual in briefing in Cheyenne, so I'm not available to attend in person. But also. I do not want to. For this. This, this entity we called city council to go backwards. Uh, when we have these types of discussions. And once again, I'm going to bring up the fact. That switching a number by twenty-one out of one seventy-one is twelve point four percent. Let's stop wasting our time and advance the mission somewhere else with our. Crit, our best gift in life is time. And I do not want to waste it arguing over minutia. And so I am ultimately, um. Not gonna be there because I don't wanna talk about it anymore.
Thank you, Max. Any other city council? Comments or reports? Tracy, please.
Um, I also won't be at the meeting on next Tuesday, but not because I don't wanna talk about it. I'll be. Uh, flying home from Indiana. Oh, apologies for that.
All right, thank you.
And just in the spirit of making sure we have enough council members for that meeting. Um, I will be away working and so I'll be in that funny situation where it's possible that I could attend. Remotely on the, on April eleventh, but it's also possible that. I would only be able to listen for a few minutes before darting back out again. I, I have no way to predict. How, how present I will be.
That's for some council members who either cannot attend or, or, you know, possibly will not be able to attend effectively, so. Um, we probably need to make a decision on whether that's even worthwhile. Um, that leaves only three city council members to discuss short term rentals, in which case. You know, the, the, in my opinion, the work session doesn't make any sense.
Right.
Do, do we have, uh, any thoughts on that?
Well, I definitely feel like we should still have the discussion contrary to Max's beliefs. I do think twelve percent is a. Huge, uh, indicator, uh, for our community of small size. Um, and, you know, changes of such are pretty massive and quite frankly, if it were up to me, it'd be lower, but.
We gotta think. Due to you and Max, after the discussion we need to have in the work session, we're having that discussion, you know, now. Um, the question in my mind is, should we even bother having the work session this week if only three city council members could be present? That's the question.
No.
So you could move it to. I was just looking at the calendar, if you wanted to move it. So you have, uh, it is scheduled for next Tuesday, the following Tuesday for your regular scheduled council meeting on the eighteenth. Uh, I would not suggest having it then, if you could have it on April twenty fifth. That would be the next available Tuesday. The following Tuesday is regular council meeting. And then the Tuesday following that is your, uh, work session on standing for science. So the twenty fifth is the next available Tuesday.
What would, uh, people's availability be for the twenty fifth? Just raise your hand if you think you could be available. Tracy says yes.
Dan will be remote on Tuesday.
Shannon will be remote, okay? Max, twenty fifth, you're out no matter what, right? If I, if I understand you correctly. Dana, what do you think about the twenty fifth?
No, I have a bill of generation mil- meeting.
Okay, Christian?
I can do twenty fifth.
Jim?
Sure.
Okay, uh, we have at least five city council members available, uh, possibly six. Um, so if it's okay with everybody, we will schedule it with twenty fifth. Thank you.
Yep.
Same time?
Same time, same place? Any other council reports?
If you're, if you're moving on to the council reports, I'd like you to raise something in my report, just one last thing.
Please.
Uh, C four contacted me today and they have a, a flyer that they would like to be circulated. Um, it is essentially. They are a resource, um, for people in town and there are. Uh. Essentially, they wanna make it clear that. Essentially, they want to make it clear that they if any community member is having anything, any issues with the health safety. Or welfare regarding energy issues at homes, they should contact C four. So rather than provide a list of all the programs that they provide, that's the message they would like to get out is that. You know, if people are in need with regard to health, safety or energy issues at home, these contacts see for. And they are an amazing resource. We are lucky to have them in the community. Emily does a fantastic job as well as her team, so just to get the word out that that's a resource that's available.
Christian Lee is available in English and Spanish. They have wonderful staff who are bilingual and more than happy to assist in either language.
Right, and I think the flyer is.
Yes.
Bilingual.
Yeah, my. Great. I would like to say to Mayor Proten Green's point. I do believe that we should add public comment at the end of city council again, if that's appropriate. And on city council on the eighteenth, we will have that on on the agenda, so thank you. All right, any final comments before we head out? We're not doing public comment tonight because it is not on the agenda, so I apologize. You want to talk to anybody in city council afterwards, you certainly may. At this time, it is. Seven forty four, city council is adjourned.
Must be a really long one.